We are on the air.
Well, welcome to the November 20th meeting of the Kennybunkport Planning Board. For attendance, we have a full board and we have a new board member. So, Mr. Harcourt, John Harcourt, has joined us as an associate member, which means he votes when there's not a full crew. And Larry Simmons is now a full-time member. So, that's the attendance, which we got the whole crowd, which is great. Okay, so the first thing is the approval of minutes. And I found a thing and sent her a note earlier, which she agreed to. I don't, of course, neglected to bring it with me. But there was, there was a description of items three and four, from Steve's original descriptions, talking about what well was going to do what. And what they're doing was taking one of the wells and rerouting it to use it on filling the pond and not filling the pond. And we just deleted mention of, of two or three cottages, which was what the one that was filling the pond was also doing, two, three cottages. Now it'll only do the two or three.
Yeah, but basically, well, twelve will no longer be used to fill the fire pond. Well, eight may be used to fill the fire pond, yeah, full stop.
Right, so that's just slight change to what she had put. And I don't think we found anything funny for a change.
No.
It was like the funny ones, but she was careful not to refer to, she referred to septic discharge rather than saying effluent, so.
That's close enough.
Yes. Anyway, I would like to entertain a motion to approve them as, as modified.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as modified.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So, we have an agenda where two pieces are findings of fact, which are just quick, quick and dirty things ideally. So, I would like to take the public hearing out of order, just in case there's any public here for the public hearing, we can get rid of that in a hurry. So, Russ, can you please come up for item 190903, Kennybunkport Conservation Trust Site Plan Review Public Hearing?
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. My name is Russ Grady. I am here representing the Kennybunkport Conservation Trust. As I shared at the last meeting, I'm one of a number of different people helping steward this project forward. This, our proposal is to construct a parking area on Guinea Road on a approximate 50-acre parcel of land that is part of the overall, or what we consider the overall Edwin L. Smith Preserve. I, at the conclusion of the last meeting, or before the last meeting, I submitted a revised plan based on some of the feedback that Ms. Steele had provided. And I delivered a copy to her mailbox on Sunday. She stopped by the trust, I want to say yesterday, or the day before, and said, hey, if you need me at the hearing, call me and I'll come. But I think she was happy with an entrance closest to her residence so that cars would point away as they pulled in, and they would leave pointing away from her residence as they were to exit.
Good.
The submit, the second plan that we submitted was 0.001 percent greater in lot coverage than the original, so we're, the overall lot coverage is 0.005 percent of the 50-some-odd acres of land. The, the, the site line distance from both entrance and exit, as well as where someone might wish to cross if they were to go across the street, satisfies the requirements. Highway department was happy with those. So, otherwise, it's, I think in Ann's design, she had a number of parking spots. We don't have that many. We're, we're just proposing that it would be sufficient for 10. And that we, I mentioned as well, the berm closest to her property, we will plant grass. We had mentioned to her, if she wished there to be shrub or a bush, that whatever she picks, we'd be happy to put there. In chatting with her a couple of times, I know that she just likes to see on down to the corner, through the field, so we'd be sure not to put anything there that would obstruct her view of the pretty field and lupins and whatnot in the summer. So with that, I guess I'll pause and ask her additional questions.
Okay, anybody have further questions from the board?
I do.
All right.
I wasn't here the last time, but I did watch the video. Something I asked for even before that meeting was a plan that included all the parcels of land, and I never got it. So, I was forced basically to go to deed descriptions and surveys and go out and look at the plot. And I'm a little disappointed with the trust that they didn't follow up on that, because I think it would have made it better for the whole planning board, instead of just giving us the parking lot and the road.
Well, in the second submission, what I heard in watching that meeting from Russ Hunt when I was traveling, was that there was a desire to see the parking lot on the parcel in which it would be on, and that was submitted in a second copy before that meeting, so showing where the parking lot is positioned on the parcel in which it would be located on.
And the parcel for which it was going to be used.
It's the one that it's on.
My understanding is the parking lot is going to be used for the preserve.
This parcel is part of the overall Edwin L. Smith.
Edwin L. Smith Preserve, okay.
The park, the parking lot is an accessory to the parcel it is situated, or proposed to be situated on.
Okay.
And that parcel is shown on an expo, or an expanded GIS map with an approximate location. I think I did a black box or red box, or much printed black and white for you, but it shows where this 10,000 square foot dirt rectangle would be located.
The GIS maps, is it clear on there that this parcel that the parking lot is on is part of the Edwin, whatever it is, preserve?
It's clear that it's Kennybunkport Conservation Trust parcel.
Yes, it is, but it's not clear that it's part of the preserve, because I looked for that. And I think the proposal, I'm not, you know, upset about putting a parking lot here, but I think the proposal itself, the way it was prepared, is not clear. The parcel that you're putting the parking lot on, the use is not that clear, despite the loosey-goosey stuff that went on at the end of the meeting, okay. It is cropland, from what I can see, and that's an agricultural use.
It's mowed once a year.
Yes, it's mowed. Whether you take the money for it or not, somebody's getting the value of that hay. So it's agricultural land, which is a permitted use in the farm and forest zone. A parking lot is not an accessory use to cropland. You also imply in this proposal that it's an accessory to the parcel, but we're going to really use it for the preserve. I think you ought to be.
It's not what we implied, though, yeah.
You read that second proposal you put in, and that's, that's the gist that you get from there. Okay, let me finish, okay? Like I said, I have a problem with it, but I think you ought to be really clear for the public. You've got agricultural land here. To put in a parking lot and call it an accessory use, you need to make it into a park. It's not a park right now, even if you say you take a few kids out for a little runt, you know, jaunt around there. It's not a park. I think what the proposal needs is a request for a change of use to a park. And then we can approve, basically, a parking area as an accessory to a park.
So, in the paperwork submitted, it shows, I'll back up, it shows an accessory must be on the parcel in which it's located. I heard that folks wanted to see the greater picture of that parcel, so I zoomed out and showed where it's located. The parcel itself, and the preserve itself, but I'll stay on this side of the road for the time being, is a preserve in which we do hikes in snowshoeing out to the Batsin River to do water testing samples with kids. It's not one or two, it's classrooms, it happens frequently. Park is not defined, you know, and so when I'm looking at what goes on at that parcel, once per year, it's mowed so that we don't lose the lupins, we don't lose the open field and the beauty in which it is. Several times a year, we will go there and lead field trips with classes and kids from the local schools. So, when I looked at it, I first thought, well, it's, this isn't agricultural, because we're not farming and mowing, and we don't have animals out there, we're not planting vegetables or corn, what have you. This is how I'm looking at it. It's a parcel as part of a greater preserve in which on this preserve, whether it's across the street or here, we have, we do field trip things, we do community-based things. And so, and I had shared with the board at the last meeting, if it's a change of use, whatever, so be it. It's, what we're trying to do is place a parking area there so that when people use it, they're not parked along the road, they're not pulling into Ms. Steele's driveway or her desk.
I understand the rationale behind the parking area, and I have no problem with the parking area. What I have a problem with is you're coming in, and it's not clear, it looks like agricultural use, because the first proposal you put in there said you mow, it's mowed. The second proposal said, oh, we bring kids out there, there's no evidence of it, but we bring kids out there. What you need to do is be clear and say, historically, this is what we feel it is, so that the planning board can take that evidence, basically, and say, make a decision that yes, this is a conditional use, or it's permitted use, and can we give an accessory to it? The planning board has to, in their findings of fact, make a determination as to what that parcel is. If it's not a park, if it's agricultural, then we have to determine whether we can give a change of use and put in a parking lot as an accessory. What I'm saying is that it's not been clear in this proposal. I have no problem putting in a parking lot there. I mean, it's kind of loosey-goosey that you want to use it for a parcel across the street.
We've never said.
And I don't see it as one big parcel, but that's okay with me, as long as we have something that we can define, that we can support.
When I watched the video from the first meeting, we never came in here, Jamie, who's a planning board member in O'Connell, and a volunteer, didn't state that this is a parcel that is used for agricultural purposes. It was stated in the audience, and I heard a lot of chatter on the board, who then determined, in my recollection, that it was agricultural. And so, in the second submission, I tried to clarify that the current use, uses are many. And I understand where you're coming from in terms of an accessory to whatever the use is, but the, that parcel as it stands, by and large, 365 days a year, a lot of nothing happens there. On a somewhat of a regular basis, field trips happen there, and once a year, it's hayed. So, what, whatever its use is, our proposal is to provide for a little bit of parking, and I won't go down that again, because I know you're fine with that. But that, that's how this has been presented before the board, and, and there's no loosey-goosey stuff. We're trying to be very open and honest with what we're trying to do.
Well, I think the, the problem we have here is that the Conservation Trust gets a new piece of land and just starts using it, however the hell they want to. No, no reason you shouldn't be able to use that, but you never come up to the planning board and say, oh, by the way, this is agricultural, we now want to change it to the, the conditional use of community use, whatever the heck community use is.
Or a park.
Or a park, or something. We want to change its use. So, has this, how long has this, how long has that piece of, of property been in the hands of the trust?
It's on the deed, I don't have it in front of me, which is outside.
So.
You'll have to read it, I don't have my glasses.
Okay.
It's on the deed.
It's on the deed.
It's many years, 20, I'm going to guess, 30, I don't know.
The survey for the property was done in 2005, so that's probably when it changed hands.
Got it.
That's when I pulled it down anyway. So it's been many years.
Yeah.
It's been many years, it's been at least 12 years.
Can I, can I, can I jump in, Tom?
Yeah, please.
For a sec. So, my recollection is a little different than I'm hearing here.
2005 is the deed.
I agree that, that, Jamie, is that the fellow who did the first presentation, I think was admittedly uncertain as to what its current use was cla, was classified. It doesn't seem to be written down in, in any of the parcels as to what its use was. He said, well, maybe we could consider it agricultural, or we could consider it a park, or it's used for community use. And, and there was a lot of, I think you just used the word wishy-washiness about it.
I used loosey-goosey, but that's all right.
Same idea.
I, I stand corrected. The, and there was some, you know, audience discussion, but we walked away, I think, with that matter unresolved, and got to talking about the details of, of what the proposal was, and what the bone of contention was with, or concerns were of some of the abutters. And then show, you showed up at the, at the previous meeting, and I thought I heard you say, you know, there was some confusion about whether it was agricultural or not, but really this is a community use. We only mow that field in order to keep the field healthy, and we don't take profit for it, we're not a, we're not a farm. And I thought the board agreed with that, I certainly did. I think I'm on record in the minutes as, and the board, as, as affirming that it was a community use, and we accepted that. It, it sounds like, and I know you weren't here, Nina, and maybe you wouldn't have.
No, I watched the video.
Okay, but I thought at that point, you'd made the case and we'd accepted the argument, and we just accepted the minutes. So unless I'm confused about the way, about the discussion we had, and the way it was captured in the minutes that we just approved, it seems like we're, we're reverting back and saying, well, you know, maybe it really was agricultural, and if it was, then this is a change. Because I think you were persuasive, and I feel like it made sense to say that this parcel and the adjacent parcel, and probably some of the other nearby parcels are part of a preserve that is community use, and there's multiple uses within that use on any given day, and that this was a parking area, and this is where I'm going to differ with you, Russ, that I think you said was on the parcel where the parking lot is, but we certainly wouldn't object if it was going to, if it was used by some of the overflow from the parcel on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
And that sounded good, I thought, to everybody, certainly did to me.
It may have sounded good, but your definition of agriculture was very poor. You don't have to take profit from a field, the owner doesn't have to take a profit for it to be agriculture. The person who hays it isn't going to do it just out of the fun of it, they're going to take that hay.
Oh, of course.
And they're going to utilize it. That's an agricultural use.
We have a meadow in, in my neighborhood that, that grows, it's, it's on community land, what do you call it? Shared, shared land by a subdivision, and it is, it needs to be mowed once a year.
Right.
And it, I don't think it makes us a farm.
No, it doesn't.
No, it's not.
It doesn't make us agricultural.
It's not hayed, it's, it's just mowed.
Yeah.
So, I don't think, so, so you're making the argument that said, we should have considered, when the board decided at the last meeting, that we accepted the argument that this was community use. You're saying that the board was wrong in doing that?
No, I'm saying.
Because I don't see anything where it's been defined as an agricultural use, other than one could make an argument.
I don't think we've ever gone back and looked at it historically. For example, Sandy Pines, we went back and looked at numbers of campsites and things like that. So we had a definition that we could support.
Right.
And this is what's bothering me, okay? The first, this is the first I've heard that this parcel, this odd-shaped parcel on the other side of the road is part of this preserve. I, I never heard it stated as such.
But I, I think if we research it, we'll probably find the whole entire preserve has never been approved by the planning board to be a conditional use.
That, it's part of the preserve by way of how all of that land was purchased from the Steele family.
Yes, that's all fine.
And then how the town gifted some land out there, too.
At, I think the problem is that the trust pretty much has never had to come to the planning board, and perhaps should have.
Yeah.
We're sitting here that in 2005, when that land was procured, was, was moved, transferred from the Steels to, to the town.
Mm-hmm.
If, if they were going to use it for anything other than agriculture, animal husbandry, essential services, et cetera.
It goes into conditional.
Then it's conditional use, they have to come here.
Right.
And they didn't come here for that purpose. So, the, this, you know, kind of in a go forth and sin no more category, we definitely have to get into the, the, into the finding of facts that this is a, whatever we define that, use.
We have to define it as some sort of conditional.
As one of the conditional uses.
Right. I thought that's what we did last meeting.
Right, I think that's what.
We agreed it was a community use, and that's why it was before the board.
The problem is, we can't go back to 2005 and say, hey, by the way, this land we just bought, it's going to be used conditionally for this purpose. But I, so.
No.
I think going forward.
Going forward, we need to do that.
Yes.
So, I think any, you know, for, for instance, the last time we saw you here was for that, the, the park down, and you said the word, park, and said conditional use and the whole bit. So that was, was properly done.
Mm-hmm.
The Smith Preserve in, in total probably was never properly done through the planning board.
So this is our first opportunity to approve the conditional use for this parcel.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant has proposed that we approve the conditional use of it being a community use. Are we arguing that point, that it is not a community use, that it needs to be agriculture?
No.
No.
Okay.
You, you need to decide whether you're going from agriculture to a conditional use, and state that it is now a conditional use, either community use or park.
Right.
Because if it's agriculture, I can't see a parking lot as an accessory.
Accessory.
But if it's community use or a park.
Yep.
You can get a parking lot as an accessory use.
Sure. So, we need to overtly change the use.
We need to say that, but I don't think that its current use is arguably agricultural.
No, I, I agree.
And that's where, I think, we're differing.
That may well be, but we have to decide that it can go to a conditional use, basically.
I agree with that, and I think that's what we have agreed.
That's what we want to define more clearly, so that you can get an accessory use of a parking lot out of it. You have to go from basically.
I agree, that's a given.
To a conditional use, and state that we are allowing a conditional use, either a community use or a park.
Yeah.
So that you can get the accessory use out of it.
Agreed, and I will capture that in the findings of fact accordingly.
Oh, you're doing well.
I was asked to do that.
We, we forgot, I forgot they'd asked you when you weren't here, so we signed him.
Okay, all right.
Okay, no, I think that will capture it in the findings of fact, in, in future.
I think, I think.
You know, if you're.
I think I heard things that weren't explicitly said last time, is what's going on here, because my head's reeling, it's like, didn't, didn't we all agree to this before? But I don't think it was.
Right, we have to basically say.
Certainly wasn't crystal.
I left with the same understanding.
That was the loosey-goosey part, okay? That's what bothered me.
So we have to overtly say that this is now a condition.
It was the wishy-washy part.
That, that is changing, changed from something which was officially agriculture to a conditional use.
It was not officially agriculture, that's, that's, that's the deal. It was officially.
Okay, so, what is it, we're saying.
A parcel that has never been to the planning board for approval as a conditional use before.
Okay.
That's, that's, I don't think we need to say more than that.
Right, so they, yeah, they, they waited, waited 13 years, but.
Approved as a conditional use, then.
Yes, well, but, but.
But do you want a community use, or do you want a park?
Yeah, exactly. Does the applicant have a preference?
Park's not defined.
Neither, neither is.
We agreed, we agreed at the last meeting that it was community use.
Community use does have more than park.
Do you want to change your mind as to what we agreed at the last meeting, where we said, we agreed it was a community use we were going for?
No, it's the community use is.
It's going to be community use, okay.
Okay.
All right, so confirm, community use, huh? All right.
Wernah, do you have any thing to say on this, or you?
I'm glad we skipped the findings of fact.
I was waiting for that.
Anything, anything wise.
I was, I was waiting for that.
I'm not sure that's going to fit that well.
Yeah, that may not fit it.
I think park fits it better.
Oh, my God.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, if you look at it, if you go back and look at.
A government or public service use for the general benefit of citizens funded in whole or in part by the town of Kennybunkport, or a quasi-public organization, including by way of illustration, and without limitation, municipal buildings, schools, public parks, recreational facilities, fire stations, ambulance services, sewage treatment plants.
Yeah.
I think park is a better one.
Park.
Because it's undefined.
Oh, okay.
There's no definition of park.
All right. So it was community use, now it's a park?
No, we're saying it's now, it's never been stated what the use, use is now being stated as.
As a park.
Park.
Okay, okay, we, we agreed on that? The, how's the applicant's view about this?
If you're happy with it.
So the whole preserve is now a park?
Yes.
Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
No?
Well, we, we're not ruling on that.
We are not dealing with anything but this one.
This one.
But we certainly are setting a precedent.
Yes.
Okay.
And I would go back to my question, Wernah, do you have anything to add on this?
Yeah. So, I'm, you know, so I'm looking at the definition of agriculture, and I don't want, I don't want to throw a wrench in your works here, but.
I've never talked to you before.
But I mean, you know, well, you know, I mean, we live, I mean, we live in this book, and, you know, we live in the, you know, in the definitions.
But if you look at the definition of cropland, and cropland comes under agriculture.
Do we even have that one?
Well, I was looking at the state definition of cropland, I think we have one, though.
Yeah, so, you know, the definition we have of agriculture is cultivation of soil for the production or raising of food, crops, or other valuable or useful products, including commercial gardening and the growing of nursery stock. Agriculture does not include forest management and timber harvesting activities. So, I mean, I guess arguably, you know, well, I don't know, that, that's the definition. But I don't think, you know, what I'm hearing is the debate on whether or not this is ag, ag land or not.
Not today.
Today. What do we want it to be?
You know, I mean, I think, you know, the, you know, the community use definition, I think, you know, I mean, does it fit? Well, you know, it's kind of a square peg in a round hole, but I mean, it does, you know, it, you know, you have to then kind of ask yourself, what's, you know, do, you know, are trails, did trails fall into recreational facilities? Or is it broad, or is an undefined definition of park broad enough to deal with, you know, the, you know, passive recreational uses that, you know, that occur on all the trust properties? You know, and I, I don't know if it's, you know, the context is to discuss it here, but I mean, you know, I think it's important, you know, one, for me to understand, you know, what, you know, what the board's request and direction is, as we deal with other pieces of property.
Absolutely.
You know, and what, you know, and what rises to the level of a planning board, you know, a planning board review and application. So, and again, I don't know that it's, you know, it needs to get figured out in the context of this particular application, but that's going to be helpful for me to understand.
So, so I understand the argument that says, because park is not defined, it's particularly easy to say this must. So, so I understand the argument that says because park is not defined, it's particularly easy to say this must be a park. You can't, you can't argue against it, but I, I will ask. Park is a conditional use in every zone except one. It's a permitted use in Cape Arundel. What, what do you think that's telling us? Does, does, does that tell us what a park is? I, I don't know.
Doesn't tell us at all.
That's weird.
You think I'm wrong on that? That's, that's what my notes say.
No, I don't think you're wrong, I think it's weird.
I have to tell you, my first reaction was I think you got a typo, but. My first reaction, but.
Well, it could be, and, and if it is, it's mine.
No, it's permitted.
Oh, permitted, that's, yeah.
Yeah, park is a permitted use, Cape Arundel.
Yeah.
So, so there was a reason that park is even in here. There must be one of them. We're proposing to add another. Why?
I don't understand why park is a conditional use in the first place.
I don't, yeah, I don't understand why it's not a, why it's.
Yeah.
Well, you might not want one next to you, you know?
Well, that's, you still have, you still have.
Especially if it's not defined, and it could be anything.
Sounds like a planning board workshop, isn't it?
Yeah.
Could be an amusement park.
So, so is somebody making, somebody is making an argument that I don't understand yet that says this is not, this is arguably not a community use.
Yeah.
I'm just saying quasi-public organization. Is the trust a quasi-public organization? I don't think so.
No, it's a five oh three C.
Yeah, it's not, it's neither of the types of organization that can have community uses.
What, what would a quasi-public organization be? What would be an example?
School.
School. Fire department.
I thought the list were called out.
Those are government.
I don't think you're gonna find that defined.
What, quasi-public?
That's right, what?
It's right next to park.
It's right there with park.
It's right next to the definition of park.
It also says funded in whole or in part by the town.
Well, it's actually got public, it's got public parks under community use.
Or a quasi-public organization.
Yeah.
See that? Says community use includes public parks.
And recreational facilities.
Yeah, and recreation. So.
The funding part of it is only covered though if, if the trust will allow itself to be considered quasi.
I mean, I think if you're, if you're looking for the simple answer, I think you go with park.
Yeah.
You know, is the, is the simple answer.
Would park be acceptable to the applicant?
It would be.
I would propose that we accept park as the new proposed updated application for, for this parcel. Is that, is that fair?
Fair, I think so. And for, in the future, just pop a little cha, you know, define definition of use.
Except there's no definition.
If you're, you know, doing something like this in the future on some other property that never got defined as anything.
Right.
Yeah.
That's not his problem, that's his beauty.
And, and we like park because it's not defined.
Yeah, that's, we, we, everybody knows what it is.
Such a general.
To do them one at a time, cause it is conditional.
Parks can have trails, they can have huts, they can have things like that.
Okay.
Okay, they can have parking lots.
Now there we go. Okay.
So, you know, if somebody were interested, and we're a clever wordsmith, it would be interesting to come back to the board with a proposed definition.
Yeah.
Of park.
Yeah.
Is, is there anybody on the board who wants to take a cut at that?
A park? Okay.
Yeah, definition.
Oh yeah, I'll do that. Okay.
Park.
I'm sure Nina will critique it.
Are you talking, like, national parks, state parks?
Are we done with comments from the board so I can open this to public hearing?
Okay, so, so hang on, so I'll prepare a, a, a comment on parks.
It has nothing to do with this, though.
Yeah, just this, yeah, that's right, okay. So I'll, I'll prepare and set up a comment.
I'll put this application, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm married to a linguist, so I have to go after all these words.
Well, you should be taking this.
Okay. Being no, no further comments from the, the board, I'm going to open this up for a public hearing. So, all you public out there, uh, no?
Anyone who wants to step in and squagmire?
Yeah. Steve, wouldn't you just love to be public here, you know? Well, I am going to close the public hearing in that case, and I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this.
May I just ask a question of the applicant, just to make sure I get the, the facts right? The, the agreed upon change that you've, you've worked with the abutters is the one that's on this sketch that came in with revision four, is that correct?
She has an entrance and an exit.
And the entrance is away from the Steele property?
Correct.
Or is it at the Steele property?
The entrance is closest to Ms. Steele's house, and the exit is furthest from her house, so she was concerned with vehicular traffic coming in and maybe a headlight pointing at her home.
So it's inside of the berm?
It'll be directed away from her home.
You're gonna be inside of the berm, ten spaces, one way?
One way in, one way out. And there'll be an entrance and an exit sign.
And what did you tell me about signage?
An entrance and an exit.
Small.
Yeah, very low, but note very clear, not twenty feet tall or whatever the sign limitations are.
Were there any other conditions that we discussed and that need to be levied?
There was gonna be no lighting.
No, no lighting.
And they, the spaces are in compliance with the land use ordinance.
The size, the size of those is defined.
Yeah, they're a little bit bigger even.
Your plan date was five fifteen, two thousand nineteen. That's the revised plan date by Dave Hughes is dated.
There's a revision number four, ten twenty nine nineteen, is at the bottom.
Oh yeah, yeah, revision.
Ten twenty nine nineteen, thank, thank you, yes, rev four.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yep, ten twenty nine.
Thank you, that's all I had.
All right, so.
So I'll make a motion to, um, accept this application.
Approve, yeah.
Approve this application with it defined as, the parcel defined as parkland and the parking lot as an accessory use.
To that park. To that park, yes.
To that park, yeah.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Good. So, that took longer than I thought, but that's okay. I think we've got it clear, and now we're going to move to finding of, of facts reading, so. We start with item one nine oh four, eight oh three, Hidden Pond, Sebaggo Techniques, Site Plan Review, Finding of Facts. And I guess Larry has been doing it more because George was out, so Larry is going to read this as case manager kind of, or whatever.
Okay.
Please read.
All right, yeah, thank you. So, this is the Kennybunkport Planning Board, Finding of Fact and Decision, Approval of Application of Hidden Pond LLC, Kennybunkport, Maine, zero four zero four six, to amend design of previously approved ten cottage units. Following site plan review pursuant to the Kennybunkport Land Use Ordinance held on eighteenth of September, two thousand nineteen, in a public hearing held on three dates, second of October, two thousand nineteen, sixteenth of October, two thousand nineteen, and the sixth of November, two thousand nineteen, the Kennybunkport Planning Board makes the following findings of facts and conclusions and renders the following decision, subject to the conditions enumerated below. The applicant, findings of facts are as follows. The applicant is Hidden Pond LLC, here, here and after the applicant, with the mailing address of two Livewell Drive, Kennybunk, Maine, zero four zero four three. Two, in a letter dated August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, Hidden Pond LLC has authorized Sebaggo Techniques, Inc. to act as the agents for this matter. Three, the property has a street address of three five four dash three five six Goose Rocks Road, Kennybunkport, Maine, zero four zero four six. Four, the property is identified as map thirty-eight, block zero zero one, comma, lot, and map thirty-seven, block three, lot three, on the municipal tax assessor's maps. Five, the property is located in the free enterprise zone. Six, the owner, Hidden Pond LLC, has demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a copy of a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds Book one five two seven nine, pages eight four four five, dash eight four five four. Seven, the applicant proposes to amend a site plan approved by the Kennybunkport Planning Board on December seventeenth, two thousand eight, by changing the design and location of ten previously approved cottages. Okay. Eight, applicant has submitted a site plan application dated August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. This application includes architectural plans and site plans. Nine, applicant has not requested submission waivers and has presented a complete and detailed application. Ten, applicant has not requested any performance standard waivers from the requirements of the Kennybunkport Land Use Ordinance. Eleven, the applicant has received permits from the Maine DEP via Department Order L dash two three two one eight dash eight seven dash one dash M, dated September sixth, two thousand nineteen. Twelve, all other findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions remain as approved in findings of fact by Kennybunkport Planning Board dated June sixth, two thousand seven, December seventeen, two thousand eight, November seventeen, two thousand ten, October first, two thousand fourteen, and subsequent orders all remain in effect. Thirteen, pursuant to the requirements of Article ten point ten point A of the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decisions, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings which would otherwise compel denial. A, the proposed use meets the definition or specific requirements set forth in the Land Use Ordinance and will be in compliance with applicable state or federal laws, finding yes. B, the proposed use will not create fire safety hazards and will provide adequate access to the site or to the buildings on the site for emergency vehicles, finding yes. C, the proposed exterior lighting will not create hazards to motorists traveling on adjacent public streets and is adequate for the safety of occupants or users of the site and will not damage the value and diminish the usability of adjacent properties, finding yes. D, the provisions for buffers and onsite landscaping provide for adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development, finding yes. E, the proposed use will not have a significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of abutting property as a result of noise, vibrations, fumes, odor, dust, glare, or other cause, finding yes. F, the provisions for vehicular loading and unloading and parking for vehicular and pedestrian circulation on the site and onto adjacent public streets will not create hazards to safety, finding yes. G, the proposed use will not have a significant detrimental effect on the value of adjacent properties which could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan, finding yes. H, the design of the site will not result in significant flood hazards or flood damage and is in conformance with applicable flood hazard protection requirements, finding yes. I, adequate provision has been made for disposal of wastewater or solid waste and for the prevention of ground or surface water contamination, finding yes. J, adequate provision has been made to control erosion or sedimentation, finding yes. K, adequate provision has been made to handle stormwater runoff or other drainage problems on the site, finding yes. L, the proposed water supply will meet the demands of the proposed use or for fire protection purposes, finding yes. M, adequate provision has been made for the transportation, storage, and disposal of hazardous substances and materials as defined by state law, not applicable. N, the proposed use will not have an adequate, sorry, an adverse effect on significant scenic vistas or on significant wildlife habitat or will have such an impact that could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan, finding yes. O, the proposed use will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion, not applicable. P, existing off-site ways and traffic facilities can safely and conveniently accommodate the increased traffic generated by the development as far away from the development as the effects of the development can be traced with reasonable accuracy, not applicable. Conclusions. Articles ten point ten point A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more identified findings that would otherwise compel denial, and as noted above, the board makes no such findings. Decision, the site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any, pursuant to Article ten point one and ten point one two point E. One, the applicant pursuant to ten point one two point E shall notify the planning board prior to the transfer of rights to construct and approve project. Two, the applicant must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the York County Registry of Deeds before any permits may issue or before any construction activity may commence. Three, the applicant shall comply with all terms and conditions of the town of Kennybunkport ordinances. Four, the applicant shall obtain additional information on the construction and flow performance, both of site well number twelve, twelve, and of the well designated as Bassett Well by performing acoustic tele viewer borehole surveys and fracture flow surveys of both wells to evaluate fracture orientation and flow rate. Five, the applicant shall use hydro fracking in the Bassett Well in an attempt to improve inflow performance of this low-yield water well. Six, the applicant shall monitor inflow performance of the Bassett Well for a period of at least one year after completing hydro fracking operations in order to determine whether the well satisfies normal household use. Seven, should inflow performance of the Bassett Well prove insufficient to satisfy normal household use within a reasonable timeframe spanning at least two full consecutive summer seasons, commencing immediately upon completion of hydro fracking, applicant shall drill and complete a new Bassett Well to satisfy such normal household use. Eight, the applicant shall discontinue use of well twelve as source of water to fill firewater pond surface reservoir. Nine, the applicant shall use well eight with normal inflow of about forty GPM as source water to fill the firewater pond surface reservoir. Should capacity of well eight prove insufficient for filling and maintaining required water levels in firewater pond, alternative or supplemental wells shall be utilized for this purpose. In due course, the applicant shall provide confirmation of final well configuration for providing water to the firewater pond. Ten, the applicant shall supplement current sampling program for the wastewater as follows. On or about June first, and repeating again, on or about September first, starting on June first immediately following installation of the Fuji Clean Scent Twenty-One System, the applicant shall take appropriate fluid samples from the Fuji Clean vessel and from the existing distribution box downstream of the existing OxyPro forty-five hundred treatment module. The primary purpose of this sampling program is to define concentrations of nitrogen compounds in the wastewater upstream of the existing disposal field. The supplemental sampling program shall continue until such time that no concentrations of contaminants exceed governmentally specified levels for at least a year. Eleven, the applicant shall add two monitoring wells in the area designated as the nitrate flow wastewater plume disposal area in the vicinity of the disposal field for the septic system. Monitoring of water quality in these two wells shall continue as part of the current wastewater sampling program. Twelve, the applicant shall utilize exterior light fixtures which minimally impact flora and fauna, fauna in the project area, such as by directing light downwards. Thirteen, the applicant shall implement design features which minimize the occurrences of bird strikes on glass proposed, proposed for the project, such as by installing screens for windows and constructing screened porches. Dated twentieth of November, two thousand nineteen, Kennybunk Planning Board.
Well, I'll move approval.
I'll second.
In favor? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Don't you start getting these signed?
Get these signed, yeah.
After it gets past Scott here, we'll start signing.
All right.
Start listening to him, because yours won't be quite as long for Mark and Elizabeth.
Absolutely. It's all confirmed, Scott.
Well, why don't we wait until you've signed this and then?
Okay, it's coming your way.
And was John on this?
No, I, because he wasn't here last week, so I didn't, I didn't put his name under.
Oh. At least it added him or anything.
No.
No.
Okay. So, John, just sign your name underneath the bottom of the page. So, I should proceed with reading item one-nine-oh, nine-oh-one, Mark Messer and Elizabeth Carlson, finding effects on road widening.
Yes, the application of Mark Messer and Elizabeth Carlson of Seven Ledge Road, Kenny Bunkport, Maine, to widen Ledge Road to accommodate an additional house lot, road widths as per plan provided by Lower Village Survey Company and file number one-oh-four-dash-one-twenty-two dated ten-twenty-eight of nineteen. Following a site plan review pursuant to Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance held on October sixteenth of nineteen and a final public hearing held on November sixth of nineteen, the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board makes the following findings of facts and conclusions and renders the following decision subject to the conditions enumerated below. Finding of facts are as follows. The applicant is Mark Messer and Elizabeth Carlson, mailing address Seven Ledge Road, Kenny Bunkport, oh-four-oh-four-six. The property has an address of the same. The property number three is located in the Village Residential East and Free Enterprise Zones. The owner has demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a warranty D dated five-twenty-one of oh-seven and recorded five-twenty-one of oh-seven in the York County Register of Deeds. At book one-five-one-six-two, pages oh-one-seven-two through oh-one-seven-five, number five, the property is five-plus acres, lot width a thousand-plus, depth a thousand-plus feet. The property is located, again, at Seven Ledge Road, Kenny Bunkport, and is identified as map twenty-four, Lot Four, Block Four, excuse me, Lot Twenty-three on the municipal tax assessor's maps. And an application dated nine-one of nineteen, the applicant proposes, A, to reconstruct Ledge Road to a sixteen-foot width. The sixteen-foot width would begin at applicant's present driveway to the proposed Hammerhead with the exception of two wetland crossings. The wetland crossings would be permitted to remain at the current twelve-foot traveled width as shown in the referred plan. Between the two wetland crossings, a twelve-foot wide emergency vehicle pullover shall be constructed from Wilds District Road. To applicant's present driveway can remain at the current width. Your new driveway from the Hammerhead to the proposed residential shall, residence, shall be no less than twelve feet wide. Further, the plan is written by Lower Village Survey on file number one-oh-four-dash-one-twenty-two dated ten-twenty-eight of nineteen and is approved by Fire Chief John Everett in a memo dated eleven-five of nineteen, must be adhered to. Eight, the applicant has requested no submission waivers from the requirements of the Kenny Bunkport Land Use Ordinance. The application has requested no performance waivers from the requirements of same pursuant to the requirements of Article ten-ten-A of the Land Use Ordinance Guidelines for Decisions. The Planning Board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes a negative ruling on one or more of the following otherwise would compel denial. A, the proposed use meets definition of specific requirements set forth in the Land Use Ordinance will be in compliance with the applicable state or federal laws and the finding is yes. Proposed use will not create fire safety hazards that will provide adequate access to the site, the building on the sites for emergency vehicles, not applicable.
Not applicable.
Yeah, that's kind of...
That's weird. Change that one to yes because obviously that was the biggest issue we had.
Of course. C, the proposed exterior lighting will not create hazards to motors traveling on adjacent public streets and is adequate for the safety of occupants or users on the site and will not damage the value and diminish usability of adjacent properties. That should be yes.
No, there's no lighting.
Okay, no, there isn't any lighting, right, okay, so not applicable. D, the provisions for buffers or onsite landscaping provide for adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development, yes. E, the proposed use will not have a significant detrimental effect on the use and peaceful enjoyment of abutting property and as a result of noise, vibrations, fume odors, dust, glare, or other cause, yes. F, provisions for vehicular loading and unloading and parking for vehicular and pedestrian circulation on the site and onto adjacent public streets will not create hazards to safety, yes. G, the proposed use will not have a significant detrimental effect on the value of adjacent properties nor has a significant detrimental effect which would be avoided by reasonable modification of the plans, finding is yes. H, the decision, the design of the site will not result in significant flood hazard or flood damage and is in conformance with applicable flood hazard protection requirements, finding yes. I, adequate provision has been made for disposal of wastewater, solid waste, and for the prevention of ground or surface water contamination.
Should be non-applicable, yes.
And the finding is none, no application. J, adequate provision has been made to control erosion or sedimentation, finding yes. K, adequate provision has been made to handle storm runoff water drain problems on the site, finding yes. Proposed water supply will meet the demands of the proposed use or fire protection purposes, non-applicable finding. M, adequate provision has been made for the transportation, storage, disposal of hazardous substances, materials as defined by state law, finding yes. Proposed use will not have an adverse impact on significant scenic vistas or significant wildlife habitat nor have such an impact that could be avoided by reasonable modification of the plan, finding yes. The proposed use will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion, finding is yes. Existing off-road, off-site ways and traffic facilities can safely and conveniently accommodate the increased traffic generated by the development as far from the development as the effects of the development can be traced with reasonable accuracy, yes. Want a proposed development?
Was any portion of this shoreline or RP? Any shoreline or RP in the Messer?
They're wetlands.
No, no, those aren't.
Right.
There's nothing shoreline, so this is all crossed out, everything, because there is no...
Exactly, right.
Yeah, just get that out. You crossed out a little too far down.
Okay, I thought that would be out too because it's part of that, yeah. The application, number twelve, the application is otherwise complete. Conclusions, Article ten-ten-A of the Land Use Ordinance mandates the Planning Board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more identified findings that would otherwise compel denial as noted above, the Board makes no such findings. Decision, the site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any pursuant to Article ten-eleven and ten-twelve-E. Number one, the applicant pursuant to ten-twelve-E shall notify the Planning Board prior to the transfer of rights to construct an approved project, no assignment or transfer of rights to construct an approved project is valid without prior approval and review and approval by the Planning Board of a new performance guarantee to ensure that any assignee or transfer for E has the financial capacity to undertake and complete the project. Number two, the applicant must record a copy of this decision and provide proof of such recordation in the form of a copy therefore attested by the Register of Deeds before any permit may be issued before any construction activity may commence. Conditions, A, both the Hammerhead and the pullover area need to be maintained for use in all seasons. An agreement in writing as to who is responsible for this maintenance shall be added to the right-of-way language as well as the road maintenance agreement. B, the property that the applicant's new home is on shall be deed restricted against further subdivision unless road is widened to current town specifications. And the application is complete.
Okay. So, shall we approve this, finding of facts?
I'll make a motion to approve, the finding is facts.
Okay. Second? All right, in favor? Okay, so let's get this thing signed off, there's a lot of... A few places that have to get initialed also. So, probably want to first update your other...
Okay, yes.
The initials and the nature of them. Anyway, we might as well adjourn, I guess.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have an additional concern with the application we just approved.
Yes.
Anticipating, trying to write the findings of fact, I went and I looked at the ramifications of changing the conditional use from community use to park. And in looking at parking area as an accessory to an approved use, there's a difference.
Okay.
If it's a community use, then you're exempted from Article six-nine-A-eleven screening. You don't have to have a visual barrier not less than five feet in height along all public streets and exterior lot lines and a continuous landscaped area not less than six feet in If you're a park, you're not exempted from that. And the application that's been put before us does not have visual screening for that area from the public road.
Yeah.
So, I'm having a hard time seeing how we...
So, maybe we want to leave it community use as we thought.
Well, that's what I was more comfortable with.
It doesn't fit the definition of community use.
I would beg to differ. I think the Board agreed that it did the week before, in your absence.
I know, but it doesn't fit it.
So, I'm looking for some help, guys.
We can make an exception to that.
I don't think we can. We don't have the power to, it doesn't say the Planning Board has discretion as to whether we enforce the ordinance in this case. We do have the discretion to say whether it's community use or park.
It is a public service use for general...
I know the applicant isn't here anymore, but I think even in his application, he says that it's a community use.
So, we're looking at, I think you want to go down the bunny trail of following the section here, it says, from the requirements of Article six-point-nine-A-eleven.
Yes.
So, then we've got to go to what is six-point-nine-A-eleven. So, you've got six-point-nine-A and then eleven.
Right.
So, that reads, when not enclosed in a building unless otherwise permitted by the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board in the course of site plan review of libraries in the village residential zone...
Right.
Off-street parking and loading shall be screened from view by a continuous landscaped area not less than height.
Right. So, I think the unless clause clearly doesn't apply. I mean, it isn't permitted by the...
Okay.
Something to do with the village residential zone. When not enclosed in a building, off-street parking and loading spaces shall be screened from view by a continuous landscaped area not less than six feet in width forming a visual barrier not less than five feet in height along the public streets and exterior lot lines adjacent to residential uses. Adjacent to residential uses, okay. Oh, no, no, along public streets and along exterior lot lines adjacent to residential uses.
The existing parking lot at Smith Preserve currently does not conform if it's under that definition.
That's correct.
No, it doesn't.
But this is separate from that. This is a new proposal.
Can we grant a waiver?
I'm not aware of our ability to grant a waiver.
Don't they have to apply?
This is not, this is not the subdivision regs. This is not our document, this is the town's document. I think the Appeals Board can grant a waiver.
Okay, thank you.
We cannot. So, by changing this from community use to park, we've introduced snag...
Some new requirements that they're not ready to do, apparently.
Right, it would be...
That's a change of their proposal again.
It would have to if they, and they agreed that they would be comfortable calling it a park, but I don't think this ramification was considered.
Thank you. So, we want to go back to community use?
Does the Conservation Trust maintain governance over any of the, or maintenance over any of the municipal parks?
No, but their lands are offered to the public for their use.
The question is, what the heck is quasi-public organization?
That's right, and I don't think that fits because they're a separate organization with a separate board of directors and everything.
Says quasi.
Who's not out of towners coming in is the Kenny Bunkport Conservation Trust.
So, quasi-public is not defined.
No. I have a hard time with this because we all think that this is adequate for that locale.
They're not public, but they're quasi-public.
Community use, yeah. I mean, you could say, yeah.
I think quasi-public is loose, but I mean, it's as good as park, which is not defined at all.
What was Nina's term, Lucy Goosey?
I would be comfortable with reverting to community use.
Lucy Goosey, quasi?
Yeah.
Was she watching?
So, what's the path forward? We're going to go with...
Well, I don't know. If we have to come up with an agreement of the five of us as to what it's going to be called.
I think that if we consider it, we either consider it community use as we previously decided and we don't change it to park. And if that's the case, then Article fourteen applies, which says that any parking accessory to a community use where the principal community use was in existence before two thousand three shall be exempted from six-nine-A-eleven.
What would be an example of a park that was not part of a government or quasi-government organization?
I can't imagine.
Would an individual just decide to establish a park?
Or a neighborhood group or something like that, yeah.
Well, then you're starting to get quasi-public though.
Yeah, and you could have a private HOA, you know. Private HOA could have a, could have a park, you know, in their own space.
But this is arguably open, not just to the town, to anybody.
They can close it off too very easily, they're a private organization.
Well, it's either that or we have to deny, I think we have to deny this.
The principal community use was in existence in two thousand and three. They may not have had that land in two thousand and three.
The date is dated two thousand and five.
The survey certainly is, yeah.
I thought you said they had it for thirty years, but that's...
No.
They might have had some of it for thirty years.
Yeah, two thousand and five.
So, the Kenny Bunkport Conservation Trust can't be considered a quasi-public organization? I mean, they're...
Well, we would say that the community use was not in existence in two thousand and three, definitely, if they didn't own it, it was privately owned.
Well, it was used for...
So, then they're not exempted.
It was used for agriculture prior to two thousand.
So, they're not exempted anyway.
So, now they have to have buffers?
Yeah.
So, they have to revise their plan?
Or they have to go to the...
To get a waiver, appeal, yeah, get a waiver.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's your typical process for variances, but variances are pretty specific in terms of only being granted for dimension... know, are pretty specific in terms of only being granted for dimensional requirements.
Yeah. Well, I think that we have to call it a community use and just say that the quasi-public agency is...
But they're still not going to be exempted.
What, I'm sorry, where are you now?
I'm on 14 here.
She's saying that the waiver is, the exemption is only given if it was in existence before 2003.
2003, and this was 2005 they took over.
Oh.
So they're not going to be exempted.
We were already in trouble.
Six seven, you know, 6.9A14.
6.9A?
Yeah, 14. Any parking accessory to a community use where the principal community use was in existence on November 4th, 2003 shall be exempted from the requirement.
I'm going to have to actually go back and read what prompted this particular amendment? Because it's pretty clear to me that this is very, I mean, this is extremely specific. And so, you know, typically when you see something like this...
Find out what the community use was.
Yeah, November 4th, 2003.
That's right. What was in existence on November 4th of 2003 that was defined as a, that was defined as a community use that didn't want to put up any buffers?
So we've approved this in error, is what we're saying.
No, we just made an error, basically, in, you know, some of the specifics of it. And this isn't the first time the planning board's done that.
Right. So what is our process for fixing this?
Do you have to fix it?
If we've done it before.
Do you have to fix it? You can say it's an error.
We made an error and it's approved?
If a private person wants to come in and object to it and say, you're not meeting the requirements, they can do that. Otherwise, it goes forward.
Yeah, but what happens in the future if somebody challenges it? Should we make it consistent?
What do you put in the findings?
They have so many days to challenge it.
Oh, okay. Well, my understanding in this, I'll speak generally about it, that you, you know, while it's important to be consistent with your decisions, you know, your decisions that you make on an individual basis are not considered precedent-setting, that each decision that you make is an individual decision and, you know, doesn't, isn't considered to be...
So the next time they come before us, we say you have to have the visual barriers?
If we think it's necessary.
If we think it's necessary.
So this was only if we called it community use? If we call it a park, it's something else, some other issue?
No, I was incorrect. I thought that we had an exemption when it was called community use, but it turns out they haven't had this for 30 years. They've had it only since 2005.
So there's no exemption, so we should have held them to basically 11 there, 6.9A11. But we didn't hold them to it.
6.9A11.
This is not the first time the planning board's missed something.
Yeah, looking at this, I suspect what this all had to do is with the library.
Yes.
You know, when I'm looking at, you know, when I read all the specifics here, you know, because it's talking specifically about, you know, the visual barriers, and then it also gets down into no backing into the street, which when you think of the library, I mean, they've got, you know, there are parking spaces you back into the street. And there really isn't, you've got a public street, but you've got no way to really buffer that. I mean, so you've got a conundrum there where you've got the library with parking that backs into a public street, and how are you going to buffer that? Well, it's not going to work.
Yes, in fact, that's, I guess now I understand why there's a sign there that says you're supposed to back into your parking space.
Exactly.
So that you drive into the public space.
Okay, so we're going to call it a, we're going to ignore that paragraph?
And we're going to keep calling it a park, is what I'm hearing.
Calling it a park and ignore that paragraph.
We're going to be silent on...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we take a vote on that, or should we just...
I'd appreciate the concurrence of the board on that.
We didn't, yeah.
No, we did not adjourn.
Yes, I would, I would agree that it's far enough out in the boondocks that we don't have to worry that much about it.
Yeah, I think that those paragraphs probably need work.
Yeah.
And whenever we revise the...
Well, I had to read it three times to figure out what it was, but I think that's what that all came about from.
Okay. Well, I think we ought to, I don't know how to make the motion to...
Well, I mean, you've already made a motion to approve.
We've already approved it.
But we're going to make a motion to reconfirm that it's classified as a park, right?
I just want a concurrence from the board.
We already said it was a park earlier.
All right.
So that hasn't changed. The only thing that's changed is there is a paragraph on parking space screening that we're not going to pay attention to.
I'm hearing the board say, we're going to live with that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because Worn is okay with it, too. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, so we don't need a further motion?
No.
Just want to retire.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Second.
Most in favor?
In favor, okay, we are adjourned.